Ben, are you ready? Okay, at this time we will call this meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Pfeiffer.
Here.
Trustee Durrell.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Wassler.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Lutke.
Here.
President Fannerstall.
Here. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did too.
Yep.
Okay, at this time we will have public comments for anybody that would like to come up and speak. Step towards the microphone.
Hi, Val Wisniewski, 511 Rensselaer Road. I'm expecting Christmas cards from everyone this year because I've given out my address so many times. Anyway, I just wanted to speak to Agenda Item Number Six, which is in regards to if there's a vacant position. I personally don't feel it should be just up to the President alone that brings forward a nominee. Potentially, you all could have somebody that you thought would be good for the Board. If this ordinance passes, obviously, the President would have the power to completely disregard your nominee. So, let's just say I run for Village Board President and win. If this ordinance is in place, I could bring my own nominee to the Board regardless of whomever any of you guys bring forward. You can certainly vote no, but then at the next meeting, I could do it again, and I could bring in whoever I wanted and disregard all your nominees. And you guys could vote no, and then I could do it at the next meeting, and the next meeting, and the next meeting. So, to me, it just doesn't seem like a good idea, and I do feel like you all have equal voices in this. So, just making my recommendation that I don't think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to speak in public comments? Last call, public comments. Okay, first item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve special Village Board minutes of October 21st, 2021, and Village Board minutes of October 25th, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from both of those meetings. Any discussion?
President?
Yep.
I would like to make an edit to the Board, Village Board Meeting Minutes from the 25th. On the fifth page, seventh paragraph down, it states October 21st. It should read October 31st. And then on, and then moving to the special Village Board Meeting Minutes for October 21st, if we could just keep with Presidents and add the excused Board Member that was unable to attend that meeting.
Thank you, President.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
I just want to make sure I'm on the record. Jeff, I need to abstain for one but not the other. Order them together.
Because I wasn't here for the 21st.
The person that made the motion, we could separate it out if someone has to be in the other.
I made the motion that we approve both, the 25th and the 21st. With the adjusted, with the suggested adjustments by Trustee Lutke.
So, the motion is on both? That's what your intention was in seconding, correct? So, we have, the motion is for both meetings, and the second one's for both meetings. I see a person could make amendments if they wanted to or request them.
I, I would like to amend it and do them separately, being that I think there's two of us that could go to one and not the other.
Okay, is that very motioning?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to make a amended motion to special meeting and the Board meeting separately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to, to break the meetings out and take two separate votes, one on each meeting with the added, with the added changes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
With the added changes that were put in place. Discussion on the amendment. All in favor on the amendment?
Aye.
All in favor, aye. All opposed? That carries, so the motion is amended, so they will be taken up separately. I will turn it to Trustee Myers. You did make the motion, but can you pick the date that you want us to vote on first for the two meetings?
October 25th, 21st.
Okay, the October 21st meeting, this is all in favor of the minutes that do include the changes that were specified, requested. All in favor for the October 21st, 2021 meeting?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Next, a vote on the October 25th, 2021 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Those minutes pass for both meetings with the added changes. The next item we have is items related to payments of vouchers. We have dis, uh, dis, items related to payments for vouchers. We have discussion and consideration of a motion to approve change order number two for the Nixon Pond dredging project and contractors' application for payment number four, which is the final in the amount of $2,133.63.
Dave Elkner, interim DPW Director. In the vouchers you have in front of you tonight, you'll see a payment for CW Papero. There's a change order for the amount of $25.80. This is for, some, some of the numbers came in a little high, some came low, and it all, ultimately, the whole price came in at $25.80 over the budgeted item. Also, in there, you will see a pay request for CW Papero for $2,133.66, I'm sorry, $63.63. Again, it's $2,133.63. This is for retainage until the project was complete. The project is now complete.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number two for the Nixon Pond dredging project and the contractors' application for payment number four, the final payment, in the amount of $2,133.63.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the change order number two for the Nixon Pond dredging contractors' application for payment number four, which is a final in the amount of the $2,133.63. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $1,084,24.90.
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers, payment of the amount of $1,084,24.90.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. Discussion.
I have a question.
It's yours.
On page two, middle of the page, Cottonwood and Maple Dry the Quiet Zone, it says that, we're just getting billed, it says Quiet Zone updates. What updates? What were the updates? Is my question.
So, every three years, the federal government, along with the railroad company, makes, do a traffic study to make sure that the delineators and the islands, often delineators, in quiet zones are long enough. If they foresee that there's a bigger traffic pattern, that they may, might have to readjust that.
And everything turned out fine?
It turned out fine. I can get you the, the traffic counts for next meeting.
Didn't we shorten one or, or?
Uh, on Cotton-
We put a, we closed the path.
On Cottonwood, on the north side of the railroad tracks, the railroad company lengthened one.
Okay.
We're actually having them look into shortening the one on the south side of the tracks. There is a homeowner who has difficulty backing out of her driveway, so we did reach out to the rail, rail network, and essentially, we have to put in a new application. He's thinking we might be able to cut off 20 feet, which would help that resident be able to get out of her driveway.
Okay.
Motion is on the floor for consideration of the payment of vouchers. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Next item, we have our considerations of actions related to licenses and permits. We have consideration of a motion to approve operators' bartenders' licenses. This is for Jeffrey Fannerstall Jr., Colin Dries, Christine Kleinschmidt. Just to, for ease and clarity, I'll abstain, just so that there's no thought of, you know, because I'm related to one of the people applying.
Motion that we approve the three operators' licenses as red.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bartenders' licenses. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, abstain, I'm sorry. All, all opposed? And I abstain. The next, we have our consideration of motions, motions to approve temporary Class B beer wine licenses. This is for St. Charles in Heartland, 313 Circle Drive. They're having a trivia night Saturday, November 20th, 2021.
I'll make the motion that we grant temporary Class B beer and wine license for St. Charles, Heartland, for Saturday night, November 20th.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that temporary license. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is carried. That'll be granted. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve the temporary operator's license. This is for that same trivia night of, of the event that we just approved, the temporary liquor license on, or beer and wine license on. But this is for Steven Adekian.
Make a motion to approve the temporary operator's license for said, red.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the temporary operator's license for the trivia night at St. Charles. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item that we have on the agenda is consideration of actions related to the issuance of bonds. At this time, we'll have a presentation of information regarding proposals received for the sale of bonds as approved by the Village Board.
Good evening. I handed out a copy of our sale report for the bond issue that was conducted earlier this morning. There's an executive summary after the cover page labeled competitive sale results. We received a total of seven bids on the bonds this morning. The winning bid was submitted by Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis with a true interest cost of 1.5940%. The purpose of this bond issue was twofold. First was to refinance debt that was issued back in 2012 for savings, and the second was to fund various park, parking lots, stormwater, and street improvement projects that are part of the village's capital improvement plan for 2022 and 2023 projects. The total principal and interest over the 20-year life of the bonds came in $156,858 less than the pre-sale estimate that we presented to the Village Board last month. In terms of the refunding savings for the 2012 A Bonds, the total savings over the remaining maturity of those bond issues came in at about $290,000, so extra savings to the village as well. Included on our sale day report is all the updated analysis, including the bid tabulation on the seven bids that were received this morning, the final sources and uses, the debt service allocations, and the tax levy impact analysis. The tax impact for the 2022 budget is comparable to what was presented last month. Total debt service costs coming in a little bit less, so there's a little bit of savings for the 2022 levy amount for the budget. Finally, as the village has done in the past, the village received a rating from Moody's Investor Services. The village's current rating of AA2 was affirmed, generally positive comments on the village in terms of your overall financial condition, strong fund balance, healthy cash amounts, conservative budgeting practices, as well as comments on a lot of the positive economic development and growth that's occurred within the village over the past several years. So, in summary, good bond sale results for the village. Total interest and debt service costs came in less than what we estimated last month. So, the action item that's before you on the agenda is the resolution to award the final sale of the bonds. I will note that the dollar amount is less due to lower cost of issuance expenses, so the final award amount is $6,430,000. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
What was the total dollar amount for the sale?
$6,430,000.
Okay, no, on here, it's got $6,850. It came in, okay.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11082021, a resolution awarding the sale of $6,430,000 for general obligation of the corporate purpose of bonds, Series 2021A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We did this, have this as an A and B, but it would just be reading the Agenda item, so as long as the, just make it.
Perfect.
I think everybody knows that this is what we're talking about, so in reading it, I just want to throw in the, yeah, consideration of Resolution 1108, 2021, awarding the sale of the, the general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2021A for $6,430,000, just as Trustee Lutke had said, and Trustee Connor seconded. So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Anything else from us?
No, not this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now we have consideration of items related to the 2022 village budget as shown on Tab 1, Page 8, Tab 31, Pages 1 and 2 of the 2022 budget book. All information after Tab 1 is for informational purposes only. These figures may be modified by the Village Board during final consideration at this meeting. The first item that we're going to touch on is the discussion of the 2022 budget. Discussion and consideration of a motion to include additional police officers in the 2022 budget.
So, obviously, this would have an impact on the budget. Depending on what you guys do, there would be, there could be no financial impact. I was talking to Chief Misco today. There's approximately, approximately $75,000 in our contingency currently. So, if you went with an option of a May 1st or June 1st start, if you decided you wanted an officer, we would just move that money out of contingency into the budget, into the police budget. But again, it's up to the Village Board if they have a desire for that 18th officer. That kind of will play with the rest of the, with the rest of the budget.
Good evening. If I could just add a couple things. Chief Toram Misco, Heartland Police Department. As Administrator Bailey had indicated, we discussed having some of that available money and a delayed start date to make up with that, and then obviously, pick that up in 2023 through any improvements, capital improvements that would occur throughout the village, which there are several slated. So, we should be able to do that very easily with the budget amounts that we have available to us. Other thing I would mention is the cost of an officer, there's a lot of variable cost structure with that, depending on what type of experience level we get. And if we were to get like a brand-new officer, this is something we can almost cover out of existing budget, starting almost for the entire year. But if we were to get a full-cost lateral transfer that would be at a top-pay officer pay, then we would look, obviously, to start that later in the year to make sure we can cover that officer's compensation package throughout the entire year within budget. So, if this is something the Board would like to move forward with, I think it would be appropriate to have some type of flexibility, depending on the type of officer that we're able to hire. With recruitment efforts in law enforcement, that is not always an easy thing to figure out until you know you're there. So, this is something, if approved, we would do our recruitment and then start whatever officer that would be selected at the appropriate time within our budget constraints, would be my request, is we know our budget amount, and, and I would be able to work within that depending on what salary level they would come into the police department. And I also like to mention, I know I just recently emailed, I was out of the office till this, after, late this afternoon, but I forwarded an email to the Board, and then we also put on our Facebook page. But again, timely information for a third shift officer. Just this weekend, two Walatosa officers were shot in the line of duty. We missed a smart-level call-up for mutual aid by like two levels, which is very close to being called over there. I had one officer working third shift that night. We had three businesses burglarized. That officer responded, called for some mutual aid, and were able to make an arrest on that individual. But again, I got one officer going three different- But again, I got one officer going to three different burglaries and trying to figure out what's going on. It does get complicated very fast. We were able to call some officers in early, but there's a delay to that. So just again, I'm not trying to say this is every day, but it is very, for safety reasons, for our officer that was shot in the line of duty, for efficiency reasons, I think it's very good in modern-day policing in a community like Heartland that we have that two-officer availability for us, and this would allow us to do that on our third shift patrol coverage. Minus any staffing challenges like FMLA, protected leaves, injuries, things of that nature that are in control, but if we're fully staffed, then we would be able to obviously maintain that two-officer minimum all the time, every day.
So I think if the board does have a desire to move forward with that, the motion would be to approve the 18th officer and to direct Chief Misco and myself to look into when the feasibility of that would be, whether it's April 1st, May 1st, June 1st start date, depending on what kind of, what the potential officer would be, where they would fit in with the funds that we have available. That's if the board wants to do this.
I'd like to make a motion then to approve the 18th additional officer in the 2022 budget based on what Chief Misco had said as far as the seniority or tenure of the officer. Obviously, that reflects the difference in pay scale, and then to adjust the start time accordingly to fit into the budget.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the officer in the 2022 budget. Any discussion? I'm going to, I have a request for clarification. Do you have a date?
Based on the salary, right? Because then that would reflect when the start date was.
Yeah, essentially, we would look at, when they get down to the process of the finalists, they would have an idea of if it's somebody straight out of the academy, somebody in the academy, or if it's a lateral transfer. This last year, we had somebody that was a lateral at the full, and we also had a brand-new person out of the academy. So depending on what we get, we would make sure that that fits within whatever the contingency range is. So that $75,000 number that we have in the budget, we would look at hiring it at least after that, so we would not be over budget per se.
I think in this case, it would be more of a budgeted amount, like the $75,000 Administrator Bailey is referencing, instead of a date, because we would do the date according to the budget amount.
Salary.
And again, that's something, we can make that offer. We would do the recruitment immediately, get down to our finalists, make that offer, and make that offer contingent on whatever date that is, depending on what level we would bring them in as.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 municipal general fund budget in the amount of $7,927,843, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
So real quick to give everyone just a little bit of update on each of these as we walk through them. The number that you're looking to approve of $7,927,843, that's the overall expenditures for the general fund. We'll get to the tax levy later. The only increase in the tax levy would be the net new construction amount of $138,304. The impact of that is only for new residents who had new property or increases through construction builds in 2021. So the increase the taxpayers would see as we get to the levy later, that would only be the net new construction, so those new properties that were brought into the village. When we get to debt later, I'll explain that.
I will make a motion to approve the 2022 municipal general fund in the amount of $7,927,843, shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. We all voted. That passes. The next item that we have is consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 water utility budget in the amount of $1,876,101. Showed on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
And this is just our water utility. There is no rate increase in this. It's just the expenditures for the water utility.
I move that we approve the 2022 water utility budget of $1,876,101.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Trustee Wassleger?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That motion passes. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 sewer utility budget in the amount of $1,914,500, is shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
I'll make a.
I was just going to state, this is, if you recall during our budget presentations, the sewer utility has a 5% rate increase. We've done that every year for the past couple of years, just so that we don't have one large increase. We do a small increase that maintains the budget, because when we do have sewer utility projects, they tend to cost quite a bit of money.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 sewer utility budget in the amount of $1,914,500, shown in Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the $1,914,500 for the sewer utility budget. Discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That passes. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 TIF Number 4 budget in the amount of $320,000, is shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2022 TIF Number 5 budget in the amount of $16,465, as shown on.
Tab 1, Page 8.
It should be the previous one, the 320.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. To approve TIF Number 4 budget of the amount of 320, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that budget as read for TIF Number 4. Discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That passes. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 TIF Number 5 budget in the amount of $16,495, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 TIF Number 5 budget in the amount of $16,465, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the TIF Number 5 budget in the amount of $16,465. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That passes. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 TIF 6 budget in the amount of $155,660, as shown on Tab 1, Page 8 of the 2022 budget book.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 TIF Number 6 budget, $55,660.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the TIF 6 budget in the budget book. Discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Trustee Wassleger?
Yay.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That motion passes. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 debt service budget in the amount of $1,894,625.
So that number you see is updated from the agenda because of the bond sale today. So the increase compared to last year for debt service would be $160,573. Originally, we were thinking this was going to be 200,000 to 250,000. So with the way the numbers came in today, it is quite a bit lower for next year's debt, so that number is 1,894,625 for the overall expenditures for debt service for 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 debt service budget in the amount of $1,894,625.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2022 debt service budget in the amount of $1,894,625. Discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Yay.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That passes. Next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 capital improvements impact fee and special revenue and other funding, not including the Heartland bid, in the amount of $2,988,448 for the total village expenditure budget in an amount to be determined.
Well, that's because I didn't calculate the number. Hold on. I can get you that number here in a second. Literally, all we're doing is summing everything, but hold on. Hmm? No, I'll be done in a second. Total budget will be $16,773,962. Verify that real quick. That is correct. So if you look on that Tab 1, Page 8, you see a number at the far right of 16,889,472. That has the bid in it, and we don't have the bid's number yet. So the true number for expenditures that we know is $16,773,962. And as he read before, we, literally, this item is approving the 2022 capital improvements impact fee and all other funds that weren't listed for a total of 2,988,448. So you're approving the 2,988,448, as well as the 16,773,962.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 capital improvement impact fees, special revenue and other funding, not including the Heartland bid, in the amount of $2,988,448, for a total village expenditure of $16,773,962.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? May I have a roll call vote?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Yay.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That item passes. The next item that we have is consideration of a motion to authorize a downtown business improvement district assessment of $74,800, as requested by the bid board, with approval of the bid's final expenditure budget held until consideration of the 2022 operation plan, which I believe they'll be doing tomorrow.
Correct. It's just, it's always a little backwards. Our timing, their meeting is the second Tuesday of every month, and ours is the second Monday. So what we've taken to recently is we approve their tax levy amount of $74,800, and then hopefully, they'll approve their budget tomorrow and in December, or at the next meeting, we'll approve the bid budget.
I'll make a motion to authorize the downtown business improvement district assessment of $74,800, as requested by the bid board, with approval of bid's final expenditure budget held under consideration of their 2022 operation plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consideration of the motion to approve or authorize the downtown business improvement district assessment of $74,800, as requested, in their 2022 operation plan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Just for clarification, did anybody not vote A? Sure. I'm going to call the question again, negating that vote because there was some confusion on whether it'd be a roll call or not. So calling the question again of approving the $74,800 for the bid for their 2022 operation plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve a property tax levy in the amount of $6,591. I'm sorry, $6,591,517.
So again, this number, we learned earlier today when the debt was finalized, that is just taking our general fund tax levy of $4,757,909, with our debt service levy of 1,833,608, to create the $6,591,517.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the property tax levy in the amount of $6,591,517.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Sorry. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Yay.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Yay. That motion passes. Okay, we made it through that list.
Nope, there's no number.
I should just pump. We have a consideration of a motion to approve the 2022 payroll matrix on Tab 31, Page 1.
So this item was, this hasn't changed since the original budget that I gave you. All we do is we take last year's payroll matrix. We leave the low pay range at the same, and essentially, we increase the upper ranges by the 3% raise that employees could get. So it looks very similar to last year's pay range. It just has a 3% increase on the top.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022 payroll matrix, Tab 31, Page 1.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the payroll matrix on Tab 31, Page 1. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pfeifer?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassleger?
Yay.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lutkey?
Aye.
President Farnsworth?
Aye. Yay. That motion passes. Now that is the end of the list. We have some more items to go. I am to request a three-minute recess from the board. We're going to take a three-minute recess quick before we head into the other items, unless there's a severe opposition. unless there's a severe opposition. Get back in session here. Somebody's ready. Item six on the agenda is consideration of first reading of a bill for an ordinance, number eleven, zero, eight, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance creating two dash forty-nine of the Village of Heartland Court of Ordinances regulating vacancies on the Board of Trustees.
There was just discussion whether we truly needed an ordinance, or if the board wanted to create a policy, so.
I, I feel that it should be a policy. I don't know why we would have to have lawyers and everything to create an ordinance when it should just be a simple policy. I know this was discussed in last meeting, and I also feel that it should say that the president can choose somebody, but I would also like to see it written in there, if the board should so choose not to go with the president, we can do X, Y, and Z. So it's always in front of the elected officials of what the other options are. So when I know that it said in there now that the village trustees can deny it, but when that's being said, that someone can deny it, it's not being told what they can all do, besides being told that it can only be in a special election for ten thousand dollars. So I don't know why we wouldn't want a completely informed village board. So that would be my thought of adding the different opportunities that there are out there in a policy, not an ordinance.
I.
I yield.
I agree with trustee Doro. I don't think it needs to be an ordinance. I fully agree, as a president, you have your options. The board here, we can deny them, but likewise, boards are going to change between now and then, and if it's, you know, spelled out that here's your options, then the collective body can decide what they feel at that particular time is in the best interest of the village.
Yeah, I think I've stated my, my comments for a couple of meetings now, but I would agree with both comments that were, were just said, so.
Thank you. You.
I just want to clarify what trustee Doro was saying, if I, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So then, first, whoever the president is could bring whoever to the board, we would vote, and if we all voted no, or the majority voted no, then you're saying, then we would have to go to B, C, D, or whatever. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So the biggest thing right now is that we weren't exactly informed, and I know that the board always switches, so there's constantly new people on a board, and they should have that information right at their fingertips. We shouldn't have to go hunt and recreate a wheel constantly. We should have those different options available, so, because people, I think, tend to just agree with everything because they don't know what the other options are, and they're, and the first thing that's thrown at you is saying it's ten thousand dollars to do a reelection. Well, nobody in their right mind is going to say, let's throw ten thousand dollars at the taxpayers, so we're going to all be like, okay, I agree. So I'm just saying, I, in the past, in the future, I just think that should be laid out what the options are.
And I can, I can definitely put that together, the, there's three legal options in the state of Wisconsin. It's that the Board of Trustees would vote to put someone in, a special election, or you leave the seat vacant. Those are truly the three. Now, other municipalities come up, come up with different options of how they do it. So how we've done it here in the past, as village president is nominated, the board has given an up or down vote. So if we do, if we create a policy, I just want to make sure I bring something forward that everybody's in agreement with, or we do the ordinance, I just want to know which way you guys want us to go, and we will, we will do it.
When I asked for it to be on the agenda, I asked for it to be on because there was some discussion of, like, of not knowing how to, of what is available and what can be done, and looking into the law, there is quite a few different options of the way people can do things, whether there's all kind, I mean, there's a bunch of things, but they all have to fall within the parameters of the law. It's almost like a speed limit. It's a limit. You can't go over that limit, but you can go, you know, sixty-four, sixty-three, sixty-two, sixty-one, all the way down. In some places, there's a minimum limit, but so there's parameters. And in, in Heartland, we've had it, you know, the way it is for a long time, but it is up to the board to decide how they want to have it. I know that there was confusion this time around, and the reason that I asked for there to be an ordinance created was because of, we're saying A, B, C, and D, what happens if we have a board that's like, no, you got to go to B first, and someone else is like, no, go to C first, and, and we run into the same thing, where all of a sudden, someone, again, is in a position where they're like, hey, I feel like you're, the president isn't making the proper decision or going through the proper process. So for myself, I think it should stay the way it is. I just asked for it to become an ordinance so that it would, so that it would go on. So that it was very simple, and everybody knows exactly what it can be. But again, that is totally up to, you know, whatever the board decides on what they think is best for the village.
So, President, I, I just want to make sure I understand you correctly. So you think that you want everyone to know what it should be, but you want it left as is just saying the president makes the choice, and the board can vote it down?
President, the president makes the nomination.
Right, and the board can vote it down. That's all you wanted to say.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah. That's what I asked for.
So how is that giving the options? I'm, I'm just a little confused by what you just said. I just want a little clarity of it.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I was just putting the way that it had always been done, that it gets put in there. I was saying I wanted it to be on an ordinance, so there wasn't confusion next time, whoever's in that position, whether it be a trustee or a president, that it's like, yep, this is exactly how it's done.
So why would we do an ordinance over a policy? And I'm, I'm truly asking, like, so a, a policy has to be followed as well. The only thing, I mean, the main difference is that the ordinance becomes a law, and the police can take action, and other things can happen with an actual ordinance. You can get fined or whatever with that. A policy is just saying what the rules are. So I, I don't.
The state law already says what the rules are.
Correct, so that's why I'm wondering why we were doing ordinance instead of just a policy, and the policy would be what would be guided, rather than, because the ordinance has to be written up by the attorney, correct? And that costs more money for them to draft all these, go back, go to the attorney again and again. It's for an ordinance. For a policy, we don't have to go through that many steps, so it'd be saving money with the attorney as well, correct?
That's correct. But with a policy, at any given time, you could change it. With an ordinance, it takes time going through to make sure the public knows it, and as it was relayed to me, that it was so confusing for many people, I just suggested creating the ordinance, so that it's always set, and everybody looking into our, our Code of Ordinances knows, you know, what the process is.
Are you done, Donna?
Yes.
Okay. So with this ordinance, President, what would, what is your second step if, if who you brought up was voted, was not, didn't make the major majority?
In the case of the way it is now, I mean, if there was a down vote, you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah.
Or.
Then what happens?
Or same thing, let's say, if, if, well, then that has to be chosen again.
So you're saying we would just keep doing this over and over again?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the checks and the, well, I mean, that's, it's only my opinion, but that's the checks and balances. The president puts forward a nomination, but then the village board has to approve that nomination.
Right, correct.
If they feel like it's not a good person, they should vote it down. But typically, in fact, that's already been decided at the Wisconsin Supreme Court, that when it is put forward for an up and down vote, it's not amendable. So they, a person, a board can't just put a different person in, but when it's, only when it's an up and down vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And again, we don't, my suggestion of putting it on was not that it doesn't have to be an ordinance. I was suggesting I would put on because I, it, it was told, I personally, I'll just be straight with you, I was very confused, because for a month and a half, I had people saying to me, so this is what we should do, if we have ideas for nominees, and, and we should come, and we should give them to you, but it's not me, it's just the office. I mean, if I leave now, someone else is going to be a president, they'll be in these shoes. But I was told that it was very, very confusing. No one knew what's going on. Is this legal? Maybe it's not. There was all kinds of confusion with it. I felt that this solidified doing that. We don't have to have, in, we don't have to have an ordinance. However, if we were in the same situation, basically, the real truth is, we kind of had a policy. You got to ask a lot of different people. While it's not one that's in writing, it's an unwritten policy, because it's how it was always done, and then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, this is how it was always done, so this is what we have to do. All of a sudden, it was like, well, let's change that. You can at any given time change any policy, but ordinances provide more openness and safeguards for the public, so that it can't just be changed so quickly.
So I, I just, I will ask then of how we go about this, because I strongly disagree with this ordinance.
If no one makes a motion, it just doesn't.
Well, this was a, this was a first reading.
A first reading, and I don't think it should be an ordinance. I would like it to be a policy, and I'd like to list all the options, because as you just stated yourself, that there was a lot of confusion, and I think the confusion is, is that people don't know what the other options were. They felt like they had to go with that one. And so let's say we have somebody completely different come in, and they're the president, and they just keep picking people that nobody would want to vote for. They consider till the end of time, until the board, the actual election comes in, tossing it down, and then what does that look like? You know, that doesn't look like.
It would look like the Village of Heartland picked the wrong person to be their president.
I suppose it might look that way, but I just disagree. So I, I would hope as a board, we would decide together.
Now, I'm going to go back to my original comments last month, where I, again, I, I feel like the narrative has somewhere been changed, and so I just want to put it out there to the board. When, when this was originally a discussion, I think it was about three board meetings ago, so forgive me if I'm incorrect on the timing. I made sure to be very forthcoming in saying that I don't want it to be about the person, and I feel like the ordinance is surrounding the person. And I'm trying to back up. I feel like we're getting down the, the alphabet, we're already at Z, and I'm trying to bring us back to A, and I'm just trying to say, hey, this is a situation, and the situation came about, and so what do we do? And in that case, we were told, oh, send the, send the people to this. Okay, well, as I started to investigate, I had to spend our attorney's dollars, because I did investigate, and I did ask. So I keep saying that, you know, it keeps coming forth that I never asked. I did. I've got on record, on my, my village email, four different emails, five different phone calls. I did ask several times, and I was given that there are these processes. But in the past, the past practice is what we had done, but it had never been written down. So all I said was, once we get through with bringing forth our, our candidate, which again, I think is a great add to our board, I just thought we should investigate, that maybe there should be some sort of process, that when, if this situation comes forth, we just bring out, here are the three items that are from the state statute that are brought forth, and you as a board need to make a decision, because it's all situational. So again, to my comments last time, it could be that someone's exiting the board with one month left. We probably won't fill a seat. Maybe there's something tragic that happens to a board member, and we want to, out of respect, not fill the seat. Or maybe it's someone resigns after one month, and we're going, oh, maybe we should go back to special election. So I think there should be some options, and my fear is that by us going into an ordinance, where it's talking about the person or the candidate, it's changing that narrative. And I'm trying to back us up and just put in a proactive process, just so that the board, regardless if I'm sitting in the seat, I'm not going to be sitting in the seat for years to come. I hope I have the opportunity to, but that's not set in stone. So I want to give those people that are sitting in the seats the chance to be educated just as well as I am. So I think there was some confusion there, in that sense, it sounds like. I yield, President.
Clarification, just like, even though it's on the agenda, if no motion is made, nothing really gets done with it. I just want to clarify. Or, yeah, you're right, it is only a first reading, so it couldn't be passed anyways, but. Anybody else on that first reading? So the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of a motion to terminate the intermunicipal agreement between the Heartland Fire Department and the Town of Lisbon Fire Department, providing for a joint emergency training program.
So in the memo, we've had this agreement since two thousand and seven, when Chief Dean had become chief, and he put me as division chief, he had said that he would like me to go out and find a training platform that we could use that would be online and then in person. So I did that. We settled on the Fire Rescue One Academy, which we've been using now for about four and a half years, and getting really good response to it with our people. At that time, we had stopped pretty much using the Bark River Training Consortium, and I had no idea that he had not canceled it. So when I first became the chief, I was met with a bill for six thousand dollars to pay for training that we had not gotten from them in years. And so I, I paid the bill, and then I sent them the letter, which should be in the packet, requesting that we discuss, you know, making some changes to it or everything. We had met once in March, I believe, which was a short meeting, because we got called out to a fire, and I had requested more meetings, and they didn't meet with me until October twenty-first again. So at that time, we had a little, few discussions, and I pretty much said to them, let's just cancel this thing and be done, and if we have other things we need to, to get together with, we can do that and do something different. So they agreed to it, so the, the next thing was bringing it to you guys to get rid of the Training Consortium.
Make a motion that we terminate the intermunicipality agreement between the Heartland Fire Department and the Town of Lisbon Fire Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to terminate the intermunicipal agreement between the Heartland Fire Department and the Town of Lisbon Fire Department, providing for a joint emergency training program. Any discussion?
So was this six thousand dollars worth savings? That's yearly savings?
Yes. Three thousand dollars for fire, three thousand dollars for EMS. So six thousand total.
Some type of written agreement that said, no, that we pay regardless of utilizing it? Usually, you pay, pay-as-you-go kind of thing? Yeah, I got trained, I owe you money.
The one that we've been working off of, and it, it didn't say anything about non-use or anything like that, it just said it had to come before the boards to be taken care of that way, so. Like I said, I was, I was unaware that we were even still paying them, because we hadn't used them in probably four years, so.
Yeah, I saw that there, but I just was questioning it, for some fine print there, I was missing.
Fund or something?
Right, or.
Have you ever used them four years?
Yeah, probably not. They, she kind of said to me that they were going to, this is interim chief, Drager, that their board was looking to get money from this year, and I said, well, that's not going to happen. I said, I've sent this to you right after I paid the bill, and I'm not going to pay for another year of no training through your department.
And that was my question, because I see you dated it on January twentieth, but you asked for several meetings, and it didn't happen until October, so ten months later, I wasn't going to be willing to approve a payment.
Yeah, and we're not going to be held to that sixty-day notice for written notice, right? It's in.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yes? So we have a motion on the floor to terminate, and I'll call the question now. All in favor of terminating the intermunicipal agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Chief will carry that out in that. All right. Now we have a discussion and consideration of a motion to approve an agreement with the Humane Animal Welfare Society, known as HAAS, of Waukesha County.
Good evening. Chief Torrin Mescal, Heartland Police Department. This is a annual agreement that we look at every year around this time. This is something, uh, the vast majority of the counties or the cities and villages, including the county, utilize for their humane, uh, um, con- uh, control officer. They will come out and actually take any, uh, loose animals, animals that are involved in arrests, anything that, it's a domesticated animal, they'll actually take custody of that, try to locate the owner and go through all that process. Uh, this is the same exact fee as we had last year at $2,000, $2,772. Absolutely.
I, I understand that we real, this is really our only option right now for this area. But with our annual fee of $2,772, I just want to clarify and verify that this is free to the citizens. Because I took an animal in and it, I was made to feel like I had to give them a donation for the animal. And I just want to make sure our citizens know this is a free, um, contract that we'll have.
Absolutely. What, by us entering in this agreement, we could utilize this as the community of Heartland and that includes all the residents. So sometimes it goes through the police department and we're an intermediary where we'll call and contact them. Sometimes citizens just go direct. So it can be done both ways. And by us entering into this contract, it's on behalf of the village and their residents.
So if we have, uh, which we just had a week ago, a stray bulldog in our neighborhood, that was following someone, do the citizens call you or should they be calling HAAS?
Either one works. We get a lot of those calls and then we work, operate as that intermediary. And then oftentimes, uh, we find out that they just go direct with HAAS as well. We don't get involved with that just because we don't, we're not really aware of it. But it can be done both ways.
So the citizens know. Thank you.
And, and as far as the only, there is an Elm Brook Humane Society, which is a little smaller of an operation. And it's really only those Elm Brook municipalities, Elm Grove and both Brookfields. The only one outside of that area is Village of Sheniqua. But due to their resident size, their community size, it's kind of a different apples to oranges comparison to Heartland. So the vast, vast majority of all municipalities use HAAS. They do provide an excellent service and it is a 24-hour service.
For the annual agreement, but it spans over the three years, 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Correct.
So do we vote again on this again next year or is this just, we're good till 2024?
Um, I believe we vote on it every year for any cost. So I think it's.
This is just the 2022.
Yeah, just for 2022. So not three years, just 2022.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement. Sorry, trustee Lucky, were you done?
I, I'm sorry, just one, trustee, I'm so sorry. But it says this agreement is for three calendar years, 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Which our annual fees will remain the same.
So are they locking in that rate?
I do not have that information. I only had it as 2022 bill for services, all I was provided with.
Yeah, it's under, um, page three of the actual agreement. Looks like it spans over three calendar years.
I only have page one. So, if, I would agree with you if that's what it's written as.
It does. It says it's a three-year, three-year contract agreement. What you're approving this year would be that agreement and that invoice for 2022. So with that, we would.
We're locked into that rate? That was my question. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, trustee Dora.
I'm sorry, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agreement with HAAS of Waukesha County for locking in the price until 2024.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the agreement with HAAS. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is discussion and consideration of a motion to approve the ordering and purchase of two police department vehicles for delivery in 2022.
Good evening again. So this is just, uh, a typical request that the police department makes with the approval of our budget. This was all built into our budget costs. But this is something because of especially, uh, right now with supply chain issues, we try to get ordering right away just because the lead time is so long for both the squad and all of the equipment. So that's something, uh, with the board's approval, we would order right away, but would not be billed or paid for until 2022 out of the 2022 police budget.
So we used to order the police cars and get them in January. Last year, I think we got it in June.
Yeah, every year, I mean, we were usually pretty consistent, getting them very early in the year. We've gone even, I think through summer in 2019. We were surprised last year because we thought it was going to be worse and we, I think we did get it in June, if I remember correctly. But there is always that supply chain issue and we're trying to work through that. The other thing we were notified of is, um, with every business, I think, out there, you're starting to see some inflationary costs come in. And we have been notified by our, uh, both equipment providers and our vehicle provider, which is, this is state bid, that they're looking and equipment side up to a 10% increase effective December 1st. So we want to place that order before getting to see that 10% increase.
I'll make a motion to approve ordering the purchase of two police department vehicles.
And moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the police vehicles with delivery in 2022. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to approve the appointments of Steve Ostendorf and Tabby McBride to the Business Improvement District Board.
A motion to approve the appointments as read to the Business Improvement District Board.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to approve those appointments to the bid board. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of a motion and the practice of the village of Heartland paying membership dues to the, to Heartland Chamber of Commerce.
President, I'm sorry, I know this was on a while ago and it was, it's held off. So, um, again, there was no paperwork with it or anything. So could we have a little back of why this is coming up now? Or who requested this to be on? Because normally we get a little information sheet and there's nothing.
My apologies. I think it was in the last packet. I'm not sure it made this packet.
No memo in the last packet for clarification.
Not memo.
Yeah.
I thought we gave a listing of organizations.
Brought forth.
Right, but I was just talking about putting it on to begin with. Because I will say to start the discussion of this, I, I find it a little ironic that in the last or a couple, things earlier that we were discussing as far as creating ordinance and/or a policy and for the, um, a person when a trustee vacates a seat. And we talked about the history and, and that that's what we've done through all the years. And we've been a member of the chamber. All the records that I went back on, it's over 23 years. And now we're, we're just going to go. So I'm kind of curious why we'd get rid of that when it's an organization that does a lot for the village. Talking to all the other surrounding communities, like I had stated in the past, are also, um, all of the villages are and the city are members of their chamber, one way or another. So they are listed as members. Some, some of the other municipalities do it different. We're giving a large donation and then they're in-kind members. And other ones are just active members and pay the dues as well. So, um, I just find it a tad bit ironic that now suddenly history doesn't matter and we need to get rid of this $500 fee, which actually we kind of balance each other out of, um, and it comes down to about $200. Um, I know it was brought up in the past about, uh, that we support them by going to their dinner. I find it a little unfortunate that some of the board is not educated as to what the chamber exactly does and how it does work. For those dinners, there is no upcharge for those dinners. They, they just break even on the food. So you're buying a dinner, which I think is a nice thing for the staff to get, uh, kind of getting together because we don't get together that way. So I do think that's nice. Um, I know it was brought up about gift certificates in the past that had seen paying out the gift certificates. I'd also like to explain how that works for the public and the board members that are not aware of this, that the gift certificates are purchased at the chamber, whether, uh, the village purchases them or other people. And then they can be used for, um, uh, the rec department. They can be used for any chamber member. So any business in Heartland, these, uh, gift certificates can be used for. There's no upcharges, no nothing other than the chamber has to take the time to write checks back to these businesses to pay out for the thing. What it is doing is keeping our local businesses local. Another great perk of the chamber. And without the village, then that won't be able to be utilized either. I know that there's been a few people on this board itself that have served on it. And I find it just a tad bit disheartening that they're the ones that are saying, we should not be involved in it. I use the floor.
It kind of bothers me that saying we don't support the chamber. I mean, I'm a past, I'm a past chamber president, board never. The, it's always been amazing to me in the village of Heartland that the support that we give our, or different organizations. And when you look at the police department, the police department in providing all the activity and protection we have and look at the fire department and look at our DPW and you look at the, all the equipment we use, all these different things. And, uh, I guess not so much the chamber, but long, I have a little bit of a hard time, any organization, that we take our tax dollars and we put in and we're joining an organization when, but it's, we're really supporting all the organizations by our, with our departments. And is a membership that important? I, and I, I don't know. I, I have a part of, part of the problem is that we, like, I've had people say, well, you're not supporting the chamber. I think, well, where the hell have you been? Haven't you seen our firemen? Haven't you seen our policemen? Haven't you seen the social, your, our rescue people out there? I mean, it's a lot of money. We have a lot of people that we donate to all these activities. So, you know, it, uh, my question would be more so than just the chamber membership, but any membership of any group.
I agree.
Yeah, and that's a concern that I have. I, I really can't justify that. I, um, I know that the police chief is on, a member of the board of FBI or on the, in a group. And I can see that with the development of like that for development of that department. I can see Ryan learning how to add and subtract. No, I mean, going to the departments where he's learning all the different rules and regulations that are going on. And that's, that's helping him more, you know, quite a bit. And you look at the, the fire chief going, being a member of the board and learning all these things. I don't know about, you know, social things I have a real problem with. I don't know. I, um, we sup, the village supports so much stuff right now that, um, I don't know in dollars and cents if we're doubling or tripling whatever we're, uh, dues are. So I yield.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, just ask you a question on what you said? You said that, saying the chamber says that it's not, that the village doesn't support them. I'm going to wholeheartedly disagree with that. I'm sorry, I know that all you guys are sitting right there and I know that each and every one of you have conversations in with Lynn. Have you ever heard any such a statement? Any of you that we named the departments? Because I, I know she supports all of you guys. So I, I know that that can't be said. And I feel like the narrative is once again being changed of what we are talking about here. It's an organization, yes. And we did talk about the other organizations that were in there that we are also paid members for. So we're talking $250. Ryan, would that be per taxpayer roughly? Find it a tad bit interesting when you hear the amount that this is what we're, we're taking our time to do.
2.7 cents.
2.7 cents per taxpayer. I, I, I actually would love to, to put it out to the taxpayers and see who doesn't want to pay that 2.7 cents of being a member of the chamber, uh, just judging from a rainy trick or treat that just happened and business trick or treat that the chamber brings all that enlightenment down to, down there as well. And who wouldn't want to pay 2.7 cents, 2 point, whatever it was? I, I just, so I yield again, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to make sure that that narrative stays on track, that it's not that the chamber does not think the village supports them.
Can I ask you a question, Donna? When you said about the trick or treating, just for example, so are you saying that the chamber would not have the trick or treat, the business trick or treat if we weren't members?
Okay, so again, I'm going to reiterate one more time that I don't want the narrative changed of what's being talked about. Our chamber is our chamber. So they will do and continue to do things in this village with or without the village being a member. What I'm saying is a village trustee, I'm, I'm sadly, I'm embarrassed. And again, I would love to ask the taxpayers themselves, we've got a few here. But actually, we got quite a few here. But I would love to know who would say, no, I don't want to spend two, I want my 2.7 cents back. That's what I am saying.
But I guess I'm looking with what Mike was saying, to me, it's more than that. When you're putting in the salaries of, let's, let's just take, for example, the street dance. Our police officers all the time that we donate for that. And DPW taking down and picking up all the barricades. I mean, that adds up over time. I, I would think that hourly wages and salaries, because I do believe we donate that, correct?
If you're asking if we get reimbursement for any of the police time for chamber events, which would be your party in a park and a business, business trick or treat, those are the two events that the police department participates with. We don't get reimbursement, but we also don't do those at additional cost or haven't in the recent past. And the reason I say that is we're not doing that on overtime. The police department, especially with reoccurring events such as Heartland Chamber events, but any of the other ones, we restrict staffing and then a lot of times me and my command staff work those events. I'm a salaried employee. You're paying me whether I'm at that thing or not. So we get very creative in our scheduling. We're very frugal and conservative with how we spend money at the police department. But we do change people's schedules.
Well, especially if you're in need of another police officer, you can't have too much to move there.
So, yeah, I mean, we do move things around and restrict staffing. So officers aren't allowed to take off that day. We do different things to try to be creative and do it outside of hiring overtime. Now with that all said, that's not to say that we would have, never spend overtime. If I have injured officers and officers on, uh, family medical leave or whatever the case may be, I may have to go into an overtime situation or cover that service. But we've been able to do that in the recent past through our scheduling. And again, moving mostly our command staff to cover those type of events. So we're able to do that. And with any events, I think you've heard me in the past, when they come to a special event permit to the board, I try to reiterate to the board what that's going to cost the police department. And if you so choose to do the event and have them reimburse it, I'm always happy for that because that helps me maintain appropriate budget. But if not, I'm committed to doing the events here in the village of Heartland. And if you, if the village board approves it, the police department is going to make it happen.
Just for, um, another item, the kids' day where we have, what is it? Thousands of people coming into the village. Are you working that also? Just.
You can use it as a reference. Then you're okay.
I was just using to find out if, if.
You can use it as a reference. I thought, I thought you were asking about something totally, go ahead.
No, I was just asking if we, if that was as a reference, something that we would pay or not pay. But forget it. It's not important.
My apologies.
So it's okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
That's okay.
I'd like to come back up. My comments really are not against the chamber as a member, you know, veteran. Is where did the village draw the line to say, I'm sorry, your club or your group, we can't support them? Where, is there, is it more or less, we'd like, we like your group? We're going to be, we'll join your group? Oh, we don't like your group. Look at our society, it's changing. I mean, there's a lot of groups out there that I may not want to be associated with. And that, that gives us my more concern is that, what is the guidelines for this? Do we just do it because, oh, we like it?
So what are the groups? I guess I would need to ask. I know this is absolutely about the chamber, but the chamber. but the chamber is the only group that is involved in Heartland that keeps their money in Heartland.
Kiwanis?
They go outside of Heartland, because it's the Lake Country Kiwanis now, because they had to expand, because they were losing members. Rotary is Lake Country Rotary. So they go, actually, they're more towards Della Field currently.
But isn't the chamber have a number of members that are not Heartland residents? Their businesses from Peewaucki and Della Field and all over?
We do have a couple outside, absolutely. But isn't that great that they choose to join Heartland? That they are in Heartland, that these businesses see the opportunity in what our village is?
What about a church?
Guys, we're going to have to grow this. Everybody who's going to speak is going to have to speak and then yield, and then the next person's going to have to speak, otherwise we're going to argue all night. Because it's turning into, I mean, these are opinions, so there is no right or wrong. But if each person, Mike, you have the floor. I just, we're going to have to, you know, speak to the, to the board, to the room, and then the next person can go. But there will be no arguing or interrupting the other person while they're speaking. So Mike, you do have the floor.
He has a question, so.
No, no, I'm not saying it towards you. I'm saying, I mean, you can roll, roll your eyes if you want to, I just don't want to.
I didn't roll my eyes, but thanks again.
Mike, go ahead.
I'm scared, no. My, the thing, problem that I have is just what groups and what organizations? If a church comes up and says, hey, we have this youth group, we want to, want to be a, be a member. If there's other groups that come up, Ice Age Trail, we want to be a member of, all these different things, that, I don't know where I draw the line. How can I say no to somebody that comes and wants to be a, he wants us to join? And I, I'll give up the floor.
Just, I think a lot of comments have been made here tonight, so I just wanted to put out a couple of facts. So the Heartland Chamber of Commerce is a chamber of commerce. We know that that is essentially your business association here in the village of Heartland. It's a membership organization, businesses or organizations now, province, so forth. One of the brilliant part about having a business association local to downtown is, is that they continue to keep commerce moving. So I'm a big believer in entrepreneurship and commerce and, and business, and so I'm always going to be for the, a business association. Just to give you a different narrative, so I think that the board has heard a lot about the social activity and the events, and thank you to the police department and all of our departments that support those. Being a business association, I had the personal pleasure of assisting with the Heartland businesses during the 2020 COVID year. So we had lots of things that were coming down very quickly in my role within a countywide Chamber of Commerce, had an opportunity to partner with local chambers of commerce from wherever to get out and disseminate as much information as possible to those businesses. And in turn, with the State Economic Development Organization that has been placing the bounce back program grants into municipality for revitalization of your downtown businesses. I've also had the pleasure of working with the Heartland Chamber of Commerce to make those connections and hoping to be able to divulge those. But we're talking million, over a million dollars, that the Heartland area Chamber of Commerce was able to help and assist with the local SBDC, as well as the Waukesha County Business Alliance, Waukesha County Center for Growth, Wisconsin Economic Development Organization, and so forth. So it takes a synergy of organizations like this, and they need to be supported from a variety of levels. So it's not always just about the professional development of an employee, which I think comes to an average of about $5.89 an employee. On the list that I was given at the last board meeting, we see ranges of employee memberships ranging anywhere from $30 to $125, to trustee Myers comments. We do pay for memberships. It's $5.89. So yes, there is professional development, not only for every full-time employee that is here with the village of Heartland, but there's also commerce that's happening for those businesses to keep those doors open. And I don't know, but just me, from my seat, I support business and I support doors staying open. And so that's definitely something I want to continue to see our municipality support. Thank you, President, I yield.
Thank you. For myself, it was asked at the beginning of this, why it was put on the agenda. It is something that I've always kind of thought. I remember the first time I ever came in for my transition meeting when I was elected president, that I thought it was kind of only because it's, it is taxpayer dollars, so you're just going to be really careful about where they go. There's nothing that the chamber is not an outstanding organization. I've said over and over again, I think that we should fully support and continue to fully support the Chamber of Commerce, but not pay the membership dues with ties us into, being a member of an organization, you are supposed to have certain, you know, responsibilities. I think that we should continue to support them, including with that $500, but not paying a due where the chamber can say, you know, this, this person's a member of our organization. We are a community made up of all the taxpayers within this community and the land that we have. And if we don't pay $500, there's no reason that we can't still support the Chamber of Commerce in the same ways that we have, like in the party in the park and things like that. But we don't have to pay the $500 dues to do that. We can support each other without paying those dues. Someone can, it, it's very possible, but when you have taxpayer money, should that 2.7 cents that we've broken that number down to? If someone really doesn't like it, should their tax money be used to pay for it? I don't know. I don't know. But usually, we don't give it to not-for-profit organizations, but we still work together. That's what we do. So that's the reason that I asked for it to be on. It, it does not make this paid-for connection between the village and the chamber. It means it's a community organization, which the chamber is, and the community itself that are working hard to do a lot of things, business trick or treat, and things that they're putting on. And at the same time, there's times when the, you know, the village is here to try to help. So I, I just, I, some of these things are kind of tough, but that, that's why I had it put on, and that's where I thought that, I, I'm perplexed that there's such a long conversation of saying, support the chamber with as much money and as much resources as we've been supporting, but if you're not going to pay the dues, somehow that's giving the indication that we don't support them. I thought it was a good idea to make that separation, because then it's 100% the village volunteering their resources, and the chamber is volunteering their resources. But by not paying a $500 dues, I don't think in any way, shape, or form is saying that the village of Heartland does not support the chamber.
President, you, you say $500, and you would say $225?
$250, because $250 the chamber gives back to the village at the Fourth of July parade. So when you're talking money for money, they're giving back half of it right away anyways for that event. Plus, they just did the $1,000 skating rink thing. So they do give back. And to say that we don't want to be a member, I know, sorry, Mr. President, you said not to go back and forth, but started, to not be part of a membership, to say that we are paid in. I don't know. I just think that looks more odd than anything else, especially when you look at the surrounding communities. Why, why would we have to stand up and be different and say, we're not members of that chamber, but we support them? I don't get it. But, sorry, yield.
Make a motion that we, we continue the practice of supporting to the best of our abilities as a village, the Chamber of Commerce, but that we stop paying for 2022, we stop paying the actual, just the $500 dues, but we continue doing the things that we've been doing, including some police support, hanging banners and things of that nature, and the things that we do to help them. I will make that motion at this time.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hopefully, if we do go into discussion, just not stuff we've already gone over, but discussion. All in favor of stopping to pay the dues for 2021? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I think that's five, or four, three, I believe. Mr. Pfeiffer? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Trustee Doral?
Nay.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Wassiger?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Nay.
Yea. So that motion passes. Again, that does not mean that any support is going to be lacking. And nothing's, not much is going to change, other than sending a check for $500 as a membership dues. The next item that we have on the agenda is discussion related to creation of a food truck ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to pass out, get some thinking on this. I have a couple ideas that you could pass this down. Some ideas that I thought we want to protect our businesses, and we want to make, give our citizens some activities where they can take advantage of this. How about this one?
Here, we've got a volunteer. Do I have one?
I'm very sorry to do this to you all again, but I'm going to take a two-minute break. I've got to take a recess. I'm sorry. I've had to drink a lot of water today. Sorry, guys. Talk about food trucks. Mr. Trustee Myers, the floor appears to be yours.
Okay. And never had been to one, but when I came up with an idea trying to make every, hit the different ideas we want, is look at Centennial Park. The, the Centennial Park and have that for the food truck offerings. And set that up, it's only place in the village that they can come to is in the Centennial Park parking lot. They can, they're available, will be available from the weekend of the last Memorial Weekend through the last weekend in October. The requirements are they have all state and county and local licensings and permits. There is a village license and annual fee of $300 that the vendor, vendor would have to get, and they would to get a sticker. Now, that sticker would go on the truck, or on the vehicle, whatever it is, so that the police could drive by real quick and see if they're all approved for those vendors. Their, their operating time, and I threw that out there, I don't know, 6:00 AM to 11:30 PM. That's, and this is, all these are flexible. But if there's somebody that wants a business that wants to have a food truck at their service, they can get one for a permit of $75, permit for three consecutive days. But that person also has to have all their approvals from the county, the state, and everything. Now, a food truck that is not selling anything, that's going to be on private property, that's going to be in a residence or something, there is no fee. The only thing that they need to have is to have the, make sure that there are the permits and all the approvals of that food trucks, and not bringing in salmonella, or whatever, who they bring. The buy of this, there's going to be a sticker, they'll buy it at the village, village, and it'll, has to be put on there. And it just seemed that, let's get this thing settled. Let's do something very simple, we're not all experts on this. Let's come up with something. Let's say, hey, here it is, let's try it. After next year, let's write a book on it. But let's just get this going now, and I think it's covered everything. I'll take any suggestions anybody has. I just got tired of talking about it. Yeah.
Since we only have it on the agenda for discussion, are you requesting that it be put on the next agenda?
What I'm requesting is that the board members look at it and see if they come up, and if they like these suggestions to help us refine and make one and bring it next week at our next meeting, that we can discuss it.
I'd like to just commend my, Trustee Myers. I think this is awesome. It's simple, it's to the point. And Centennial Park, what a great location you picked out. I mean, it's not downtown, and it's very easy in and out. And I, I want to thank you for putting this together. Thank you.
Put it on the board minutes, or board, and it has to be approved, then it goes to the park board. Because this has to go to the park board. The park board's got to approve it.
If you're doing it at Centennial, it has to go through park.
It's on the Centennial.
Absolutely.
Now, all the things that we've had set up with, you know, we've done with all the meetings and different events that we've set up, where all the requirements and all the forms and everything, that's not going to change. This is just food trucks, Centennial Park, and they're going to fit in the village. So if we could put that out, I appreciate it. Thank you.
But I will ask, and I don't know, you have the president of the park board here. I think that it'd be appropriate, Trustee Myers, since you're bringing it forward, if you did appear at the park board meeting to, to present this same exact thing, because we wouldn't need them to give. I think it should be on the next village board agenda for people to go through. And we can discuss it now, but if we're going to do something with it, but then legally, the right thing to do would be to send it to the park board. But that doesn't mean that you can't discuss it with park board members, and then they would send their recommendations back up. I think that, I want us to all be cognizant, I know this has been kind of difficult. I think there will be some fine tuning that we'll need to do just with, like at the top of the page, where it says, food trucks for public offerings will be limited to village-approved locations only. Sometimes you've just got to be very careful, but I think we'll have to fine tune it. But I mean, the, the park board would have to give their recommendations. We couldn't just, I don't think we could even send it over there without it going through park.
Scrap, staffs?
No. No, 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 no.
I was going to say, we already have it learned as well in the work that I think is coming along very nicely. If we would want to present this to the park, we would have to actually separate it, because there is the business selling of property that has nothing to do with the parks. Only the Centennial Park has something to do with our park board. So this would have to be broken apart.
I was suggesting that sending it to the next meeting so that all options are on the table.
Yeah.
In my opinion, I think that's, there's a lot to digest. I think that we should put it to the, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Trustee Myers for bringing an idea to the whole board, for open discussion and in front of the public, I appreciate that, and not living in a vacuum. So kudos, thank you for doing that. I would like, President, a little bit of time to look, I mean, it's just the first time I'm seeing it. So I do agree with the suggestion of, we got to figure out how to make it all work, moving to the next agenda.
Right. Yeah.
And I want to, so was your intent, this would replace what staff had presented? This would be our policy?
I hope not.
Yes, I want this, just, my goal was just to set something up for food trucks in Heartland. And they're limited to, where they can, the limitation is the park. Centennial Park's the only place they can go. No other streets, no other values, unless they are.
Essentially, what this is stating as well, except for the park. This is saying food truck vendors are not allowed on the streets. They are allowed on private property with written permission as allowed by the village board for the farmers' market and special events. Shall not be located on private property for more than eight hours. I mean, I guess, I, I just want to, I have no problem with it. I just want to know what the difference is between them, just so we know where to go with it.
Somebody can look at a half-page and get an idea, know what the heck to do, rather than read them and say, now, do I need this or do I need that? That's my confusion.
And I, so what's hard is we took this from a community that used a lawyer that pretty much said a lot of the wording, I mean, we can do this, I just.
Whatever you think.
We'll send it to power.
Right, I want to actually commend you, because I went through this very good, and I thought you guys did a really good job of this with making sure that there's stuff in there about odors and the noise and the lights. And I mean, you covered everything in here very well. So I think you guys are spot on with this.
And that's, so that's the hard part. We were trying to come up with something, because theoretically, you could have somebody with blasting music in a park. And so we were trying to get something that kind of gave police all opportunity. Fire gets to review everything, review the equipment, make sure it's safe for the public. I mean, so with this one would, we couldn't have any food trucks in Nixon Park?
At a special event, you could.
That's, we already have a program for the parks that it's, they have fees that they go through, the part of the application they fill out that are going to have food trucks, and they would go there. And that would, that policy's already set, right? This is just food trucks outside of that park.
We've got park board presence, just going to.
It's that way?
Uh, Tim Hall, this park board, oh. One of the big concerns was from
This is for the, just the day-to-day, they get their sticker, but you're keeping them away. That's what, okay. I still, I think just for the businesses to know that it's a good idea to hold it off to the next meeting. You know what I mean? Because I mean, there are some business owners may come forward and say, hey, I don't like this or whatever, so.
Do you break our microphone?
As a pretty regular user of Centennial Park, I, I love the idea of having sort of a food truck, food truck park. I mean, the district in Heartland for food trucks, where they can just be set up. And I think it'll draw more people to Centennial Park. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I
Did go through that. If, if it did go, I think that that would almost, what, what was handed out tonight would almost get incorporated into a lot of the things that staff has done, the hard work of getting all the verbiage, the wording right, like you said, Trustee Doro said, the, the orders and all of those little things that if they're not in there, it's like, you can't hold them accountable. It's just the way it is. Um, so, yeah.
Because this is gonna be an ordinance, we'd need this, this written with those other things in there. So, if the police or fire would have to go, we have an ordinance to go off of, and they can take action.
Yeah. It's good. So, everybody could go to park board too, next time, and fill that up. And, uh, hear about what they have to say about it. Anybody else have anything? Are we gonna, uh, Trustee Myers, you had brought this from, you have, are we gonna hold off till the next meeting?
Thank you.
So, bring it to the next village board meeting.
I would put it on the same thing, possible consideration, or we can do discussion and suggestions again.
Yeah, I mean, at this, this time of year, I don't think
You don't even know what Park I said yet.
This time of the year is not a huge food truck
Right.
Time of year. Um, I'll just bring it for discussion. Like I said, I, I want to make sure we have something so that somebody can't say, oh, you didn't, your police can't look at this, your fire can't, I mean, nowhere in here doesn't say we can inspect it.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we have every opportunity to cover our bases.
Right.
I mean, we can do this, absolutely. It's just, I want to make, like I said, I, I didn't create this. I took bits and pieces from other municipalities that have gone through the work of trying to protect their businesses and prevent it. So, we, we can, we'll incorporate this with it for the next one, for discussion.
Okay.
So, we will have that on the next agenda.
So, uh, next we have, um, announcements.
I have an announcement. Uh, I just want to make sure everyone knows that we are, uh, celebrating and remembering our veterans on Veterans Day, Thursday, November 11th, at our American Legion Post 294. And the, uh, program will start at 10:30 in the morning. And it is just an observance to honor all those who have served in our military. And it's just a brief ceremony. It takes roughly 15 minutes, and it starts at 10:30. And for all of you who can be there, it's much appreciated, and the veterans, um, really do, uh, look forward to this day.
I have an announcement. Um, speaking of the Legion, we, at park board meeting last week, uh, Legion Baseball offered to pay the utilities at Nixon Canteen for next summer. Um, so normally, what happens at Legion with water and sewer bills and electricity, we split it one-third village, one-third Land O' Lakes, and one-third Legion Baseball. Legion Baseball would like to pick it up, the whole complete bill next year. Very nice gesture on their part.
I also have a couple of announcements. I know some of this was shared in our staff update, but also wanted to share some of this with the community. We had a drug take-back event in Waukesha County. It was actually throughout the state of Wisconsin back on October 23rd. But specifically for Waukesha County, the village of Heartland brought in 597.9 pounds of medications. And that was just through our two, uh, drop box locations in each of our lobbies. That was good enough in Waukesha County to be the number one municipality as far as total tight take-back, and we were only second to Waukesha County Sheriff, who had 809 pounds of medications picked up. We also had our Y League accreditation last week. We had several phone calls come in of positive support to the police department. We also had a very favorable audit. Um, one of the, the smoothest audits I've ever been a part of. Um, lot of good feedback, a lot of taking some of what we're doing here in Heartland back to their municipalities as auditors and implementing it within their own agencies. So, uh, very good, um, audit on its face. Of course, they have to write up their reports, and it goes through the Y League Accreditation Board for approval, which we expect to happen later this month or in December. So, we should hear more on that soon. And then, uh, we also did have a burglary incident I referenced earlier uh, on, uh, Hartbrook Drive on November 7th at about 4:42 AM. There were three businesses where, uh, windows were smashed and, um, entry was either gained or attempted. We were able to locate that individual, and after a brief foot pursuit slash bicycle pursuit, um, we were able to successfully take that individual into custody without any incident. And, uh, we're able to get a full confession on, on the matter as well. So, uh, some good police work there. And again, that was one officer really handling a pretty extensive scene of theft slash burglary slash criminal damage of property and a lot of different things going on all at once at 4:42 in the morning. And Lieutenant DeBarge did a, did a great job orchestrating that and getting the staffing needed and, and then ultimately getting a full confession. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is we did have our trick-or-treat here in Heartland. And during that time, uh, we partnered with the Department of Corrections, who then does home visits for all their sex offenders that are on active supervision in the, uh, village of Heartland. And for all five of our offenders that are on active supervision currently, they were found to be in compliance with the rules that are set by the Department of Corrections and their probation parole agents.
Uh, just a couple things on the fire department side. Uh, we did have a retirement this month. Jeff Vernon, who was on the department for 18 years. Um, a little fun backstory. Uh, if the constant context said that, uh, he volunteered at some of the other events, well, his one event that got him his nickname of Traffic Cone was at Arrowhead High School. And to this day, we still call him Traffic Cones. Our truck has a section where the traffic cones are, and we call them Little Vern's. So, um, he will be remembered forever. Uh, he was a great guy, put a lot of time in, put a lot of effort into the extrication team, and took them to competitions and did very well in those national competitions. Those were actually international competitions. There were teams from Sweden and Austria and all kinds of stuff there. So, they did very well out there for that, so.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, direct your attention to the East Capitol Drive banner that got placed up. Thank you for placing the banner for our Heartland Lights on December 3rd. So, just thank you to our staff for getting that up for us so quickly.
Ben moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.